All right, we'll move along now to old business. Item nine A, public parking access and easement agreement with Creedmore Masonic Lodge. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the board. At the October third, twenty twenty-third board meeting, the city attorney was asked to prepare draft. Public parking access and easement agreement for use as a Main Street public parking lot co-owned by Creedmore Masonic Lodge and Five W's Corporation in exchange for the city's agreement to improve that portion of the parking lot on subject property. Over the past six to eight months, several versions have been reviewed, revised, and agreed upon by both parties. It is now ready for a board final review, discussion, and approval if the board deemed to do that. Site improvements would require a property survey, design, engineering drawings, documents for bidding, which would include ADA compliance, the cost of grading, concrete paving, the lot, funding for the parking improvements. Estimated to be a hundred and two thousand dollars was approved in the twenty twenty-five budget request this year. A copy of the Creedmore Masonic Lodge four forty-nine agreement is attached for board review, discussion, and approval. Had a lot of help, of course, from the city attorney, and the masons have dealt with this on several occasions and finally agreed to the final version, I believe it's version eight. And the board reviewed, approved it, and executed the document which is attached in your agenda. Any questions of me or the attorney here?
Any questions, Mr. Wilkins?
Not a question but a statement. I'm glad we had the chance to revisit this because I was approached about this, and after looking at it again, I'm firmly convinced there's no financial benefit to any of the parties, and this is for public access for our citizens.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Albright, any questions?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem.
The clerk's going to address that. Yes, ma'am, we talked about that.
Commissioner Gleason.
No question.
Mr. Way?
I just want to make for the record, I was present the night this was voted on at the Masonic Lodge meeting. I did abstain from the vote.
All conversations were done. We'll move on to the motion to approve. Motion is made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, at this time, because I have a little small connection with Five W, I'm going to excuse myself and turn the meeting over to the Mayor Pro Tem. I will tell the board, though, I'm going to sit right out here in the thing if you have any questions.
Just don't stare because you'll make me nervous.
If you have any questions, let's ask.
Mr. City Manager, if you want to go over the next item for us like you did the first one?
All right. At the October third, twenty twenty-third board meeting, the city attorney was asked to prepare draft on the parking easement agreement, which is, was co-owned again by the Masonic Lodge and the Five W's. Attached you will see a copy of the Five W easement agreement, and a special resolution is attached for board review and discussion and/or approval.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? I'd just like to say I am very glad to see this possibly going through because this will provide handicap parking on that side of Main Street which they have not had ever. No, maybe before the hurricane blew through.
There used to be a handicap parking space in front of the drugstore, but I was on one that added one, and when the other businesses found out they couldn't get it, they had the city remove it.
Well, this will, this will provide it. All right, I need a motion to approve the agreement with the City of Creedmore and the Five W Corporation.
Can I ask if this, this approval is a little bit different because we have board members, we have the, in the program, that this one will need to be approved through a special resolution, so I think an appropriate motion might need to adopt.
Special resolution, okay. So I need a motion to approve special resolution approving public parking easement.
What did the attorney say?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that all you need? Is that all we have? That covers everything.
Excellent job. All right, we've gotten by that. All right, we go to ten new business. LSP twenty nineteen dash oh one, B and G Pipeline Company. Mr. Frango.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
It is not an error on your agenda. That is LSP Large Site Plan twenty nineteen dash oh one. It was originally submitted as a temporary land use for staging of Dominion Energy Contractors during their natural gas system expansion. Turned out to be a great site. They loved it. They didn't want to leave. Good. And eventually, we got to the point where we wanted to work with them on permanent arrangement of their site, of their headquarters there. One of the components at that time was a requirement by NCDOT because this was on Highway fifty-six, direct driveway connections, not our standard. But NCDOT insisted upon a traffic impact analysis based upon the land use and the trips generated, a lot like we heard Mr. Teague talk about earlier. That study took four years. That study took a long time because the applicant and property owners, and Chad Abbott's here, and I'm sure he'll want to talk about this, but didn't agree with what DOT had insisted. And it took traffic impact analysis in order to prove to DOT that the land use itself did not impact Highway fifty-six and did not substantially merit any widening, whether it be a lane, left turn lane, right turn lane, or otherwise. And that's really why it sat on the shelf for as long as it has. In between that time, the technical review committee looked at the site plan, made comments and reviews. The stormwater component was reviewed several times, and we got everything right. Seaguassa has looked at the idea of connectivity, and this site certainly has the availability of both water and wastewater connections right nearby, and all of the other parts line up. At this point, finally, after having agreed with NCDOT regarding the minimal traffic impact that B and G Pipeline has on NC fifty-six, the driveway permit was issued. So I don't know how much of this y'all want to see on the board. If there's anything that anyone has a question on, I'd be glad to try to address it. In your agenda package, you have over fifty pages of aerial photographs, site plan, components, everything through there, sedimentation, erosion control plans, all of the others through stormwater. Just keep strolling, Barb, and see if anything catches anybody's eye as we go through. Those are stormwater components, stormwater management. There'll be two SCMs on this property. This is a memo from Seaguassa's review authority at the time, and it was McGil that reviewed the allocation request. And then this is the operation and maintenance agreement, which is part of our requirements for a final plan. And the last one should be the map. That is the map of the stormwater system, and this last page is all of the details of the NCDOT driveway permit as it goes all the way through. They included a package in the site plan too, so you probably got the whole same thing twice. Sure did, right? So let's go all the way through to the end of that. Davenport, which is not the same Davenport you'll be hearing from tonight, but Davenport did their own TIA, private on behalf of B and G, and came up to the conclusion that there were no improvements that merit construction there. Okay, where's the font? No? No, there's more traffic, isn't it? Wow.
Whole lot of traffic.
Yeah, whole lot of traffic, so. I didn't read all that, just so you know. Just so you know. So, long story short, at this time, all of the fees have been paid, all of the site plan reviews and revisions have been made, DOT permit is issued, Stimel and the stormwater components are all in place. So tonight, the Board of Commissioners has the role of minister in the ministerial duty of site plan approval. What this does will make the site permanent, and I put those words in quotes, in the idea that there will be permanent improvements. No longer temporary foundations, no longer tanks for the collection and distribution of water and wastewater, but permanent improvements to include paved parking lots, stormwater control measures, and all of the other improvements that go with that, fire, public safety, and health and safety. Like I said, I know Chad's here, Mr. Mayor, so maybe you'd want to give the applicant an opportunity to address the board? It's up to you.
Would anybody like, I'll just do, see, does it, would anybody like to have the applicant appear? Okay.
Yeah, me too, but Chad Abbott.
I bet if I yourself, please.
Chad Abbott, C three design, two, two five, three seven, East Line Station Road in Creedmore North Carolina. Yes, we've been working on this a long time, and it was originally due to a violation. The city's been patient. We were trying to help B and G get past a violation on the, on the building being temporary, but not, not being temporary. And of course, we went through COVID with, and then that DOT district here is just, was inundated and short-staffed, and it just took a long time for them to get a response to us initially. Then the response was a new turn lane. And they said, well, this thing's been in operation for three, four years, and anyway, so they said we could do a traffic study, we did hire Davenport. Then once we submitted that, it took another year for them to finally approve the driveway permit showing no turn lane. So here we are, and with respect to the request, your approval so that these folks can get their permanent building. They're actually looking forward to putting a permanent building there, but couldn't do so because the site plan was held up. But now the Fire Marshal's actually telling them, you got violations with temporary buildings, and we're saying we're trying to get approval, just give us a few months, so we respectfully request to approve this. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions? Mr. Albright, any questions?
I just have a small question. The pictures, the pictures here, did you say there was no turning lanes?
There's no turn, yeah, no, no turn lane. They caused up the timing of future improvement for the whole road, the fact that the current business has actually been there for at least seven years, maybe, six or seven years, and not having any, and this is kind of what your consultant talked about. DOT's threshold is an automatic turn, they should, they're, because of the traffic, anything over three thousand trips, they recommend a turn lane. If you don't want to put the turn lane in, or you don't think it's necessary for your particular use, you can then provide a traffic study, which we did, to show that the traffic warrants for our site, and if apartments were going here, it was, the warrants would be there for a turn lane. But because of the nature of this use, the very minimal amount of employees that come here each day and leave, number one, have not exhibited any safety issues or wrecks at that, at driveway entrance, to anybody's knowledge, or caused any traffic concerns during peak hours. So DOT approved the traffic study done by Davenport to show that a turn lane was not warranted. They recommended it based on a blanket threshold, the three thousand trips per day, any, any road that has that, they automatically, or is four thousand, any road that has that, automatic warrant. They want you to, they want you to look into it. Most developers say, yeah, we know we probably want to need it, we're going to forego the cost of a TIA and just put it in. In this case, we knew that there was, there was not a need for it.
So are these, the trucks that come out of here, are these like flatbed trucks with pipes on them? Is that, is that what, pretty much?
Yeah, they go by deliveries. It's not everyday thing, it's like here and there, and there was no known congestion issues at the time, or complaints to DOT about it. And so they took all that into consideration along with the crash history to say that that, along with the turn lane analysis done, because they did, they did a, they did a turn lane analysis to see if a turn lane was warranted based on trips in, trips out, and it was not.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm a little concerned about the fact that Seaguassa reviewed this in twenty twenty and not again. But this business has been there all this time, and is it going to expand?
No, it's just strictly to replace the temporary office trailers with a permanent building to meet the city code.
But the size of it is all going to stay the same way it is?
Always, everything is the same.
All right, okay.
Commissioner Gleason. This is going to be, I think I was chairman of the planning board, and the original site plan review was for this and approved them, and that's the site plan that you're using?
Yeah, nothing's changed since twenty twenty-one, which we got TRC approval in twenty twenty, if we're close to, and we've been trying to get approval from DOT.
That's all I have. Mr. Way.
And they really didn't dispute anything we did, it just took them a long time to process everything.
All right, having gone through the board, I'll request a motion to approve LSP twenty nineteen dash oh one.
I make a motion to approve LSP twenty nineteen dash oh one.
The motion is made by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Chad, I should take care of you. Thanks, sir. All right, that was pipeline, ten A, ten B, monthly financial report. Mr. Fines.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Tonight, I bring before you the June financial report. I have the last financial report for fiscal year twenty-four. So like always, same format as always, the general fund revenues, we're at thirty-nine percent collected. One thing that I want to note there, because some additional revenue come in after fiscal year, it might come in June, it might come in August, and then we therefore appropriate those funds back to the previous fiscal year, they're not going to be selected into June, your June report. Some items to note there is your property taxes. You will receive payment from the county here probably in the next week for June collections, sales and use tax, actually just coded May's sales and use tax today, that came in in July. So we're just waiting on June, which will come next month. Other things to note is the utility franchise tax that we received. We should be receiving another payment from the state regarding that as well. Another small item is the ABC profit that we received quarterly, so we should be expecting that payment here soon too, and that's only like three thousand dollars that we get. So if we come down, and another thing to note, and if you look into other revenue, you see that actual, that includes that a hundred and ninety thousand that I brought before you last month for the revenue that was sitting in the capital reserve fund for future projects that moved back to the general fund, so that revenue is therefore calculated and coded in your general fund revenues now currently. If you wanted to come down to your general fund expenditures?
Lee, what's the other three hundred thousand? You said a hundred and ninety, but there's a, it's five hundred and thirty in total.
No, five hundred and, five hundred and thirty is the access that we have selected over the actual budget amount, the estimated budget amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand.
I think my question is, forgive me, what is that, though?
Where'd it come from?
I'm complaining about it.
Yeah, no, it consists of other streams of revenue that falls under that other source. You know, as you all instructed me earlier in the fiscal year to just pull out the recreation revenue, all of that sales and service. So other is all those other line items that are in.
Other is other.
Yeah, yeah, there's a list of revenue lines, you know, sale of property, those types of things.
Got you, okay, got you. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Burned it out there.
I would come down to your general fund expenditures. We see ninety-five percent expense. Of course, there'll be some things that, you know, we get deals in, in July that we got to go back to the previous fiscal year, so that, that number may change a little, but not by much, but, but at June thirtieth, it was at ninety-five percent expense. Come down to the stormwater revenues, we are at forty-seven percent, but a hundred and fifteen percent of actual stormwater revenue, which is the stormwater revenue we receive and collect it by the county that they remix with us when they send the arraignment property taxes. They send those funds over as well. Stormwater expenditures, sixty-five percent expense, power bill revenues, a hundred and twenty-four percent collected, power bill expenditures, eighty-four percent expense. If you have any questions?
Commissioner Way, any questions? Commissioner Gleason. So it appears that we have not had to use any fund balance when we initiated the budget.
That's my projection, we may be adding just a little.
You're the man.
Not a, not a lot, but we wouldn't be using any funds.
You're the, you're the man. Mayor Pro Tem, I want to just.
Wait a minute, back up. They just, so we approved six hundred and some odd thousand dollars last year from fund balance to balance the budget. So now we're saying we've got four hundred and nineteen, eighteen thousand, so is that what you're talking about? We don't have to take money out of fund balance?
No.
Just a little bit?
Look at your actual, just based off of June thirtieth.
Okay.
So if you look at your actual revenues, you see the five point nine million.
Nine.
Your actual general fund expenditures is five point nine, seven, eight. So just based off of that, if the end, you're in it then, and nothing else will be changed, and audit is completed, and all of those things are done, that two million that we received in revenue will be added to our fund balance, will be actually used. Now, if our expenditures went over that, then that's when we start getting into.
Fund balance.
And that twenty-three thousand under governing body, that's remaining. Will you be splitting that six ways and sending us a check?
It's not like a plan.
Oh, that goes back into.
There we go.
Is that, is that basically from travel and training that wasn't used? That's a lot of bit of money.
One of the lines, one of the lines, the appointed boards, you know, we budget for the action that they would need.
Oh, and they've canceled a lot of meetings.
Yeah, then they don't have those meetings, so that money is still sitting there.
Okay.
There was other lines that might have went under expense, like a capital outlay line, there was six thousand left in there. So there's multiple lines that goes into that twenty-three thousand that you see there.
Thanks, Lee.
You're welcome.
Mr. Albright.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Wilkins. None, sir. My only comment is, as always, excellent job. We appreciate everything you've done. City Manager.
I wanted to take just a minute and let the board know that Mr. Fines just completed his one-year anniversary with the city. He has done an outstanding job in all the assigned areas, the budget, execution of, monitoring the budget, preparation of the new FY twenty-five budget, with the audit came in under deadline timeframe, working on the CIP. He received his certification as a finance officer with the GFO, and we're proud to have him as part of our team.
And he still has all his hair. All right, we'll move along now. We're at ten C, City Hall renovation project update. City Manager.
All right. I want to just make a few opening remarks before our city engineer gets up and gives a presentation. We would, we will be doing this occasionally to update the board on the renovation project of City Hall. I think it's important to point out, the reason these three items were grouped in the order that they were, ten C is about City Hall renovation, and ten D is some discussion about the PD expansion, some discussion on the possibility of that, and then some financing options. However, in whatever order, we'll take them and give them to you guys as, as you want them. So anyway, it's important to point out that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Assembly has a deadline of October, October of twenty twenty-five to expend or encumber or return the money to the state. So that's an important date to note. Carl's been working with a construction schedule that he'll go over with you guys. One other item is that we have some flexibility on the other FY twenty-five funding of a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. You may recall, the project actually came in more than two fifty. So the other balance is, is in, the other amount's in the budget this year, which, but we don't have a time constraint on that, but it's all part of the project. So the total project is estimated at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And we will, again, give you, occasionally give you some updates on this, and at this time, I'm just going to stop and let Carl come up and give his presentation to the board.
Thank you. Steven, Mayor Wheeler, members of the board. So tonight, my purpose is to, you can update on the status of the project and keep you informed. Next slide, please. So I'm going to show you the individual tasks that I'm tracking for the project, the employee that's responsible for completion, the contractors slash vendors who will be performing the work, the order of the work, some tasks impact other tasks, the expected timeframe for the different tasks to be done, and that's influenced by several factors, percent complete for the task, and percent of grant money expended. Next slide, please. So I'm sure this spreadsheet looks familiar, this is one the city manager distributed several weeks ago. I added the column on the right, the green one, and as the project proceeds, I use that to track the, the money that's actually within spend. You see the estimated cost column, and obviously, actually quite different than the estimated cost. Tracking the dollars spent, you know, what percent of the grant, that's fairly straightforward. There's many different ways to track the percent complete for the project task. Next slide, please. But the most important thing is that we all have a clear understanding of what is meant by ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent complete. So I came up with this progress legend, just trying to explain to you how I'm tracking these things. So you can see ten percent, that means we've completed the research, and we've identified at least one potential contractor. Twenty percent means we've selected a contractor based on evaluation of their work, estimates, availability, et cetera. Thirty percent means the contract has been established, all physical, administrative, contractual requirements that we met, we're ready to go. Forty percent means we're on the schedule. We know when they're going to be showing up unless something drastic changes. Fifty percent, the contractor is onsite or, I don't know how many times I've heard, any contractor here is half the battle. So I thought I was sort of fitting that that's a fifty percent milestone, because you see there's plenty of work that has to be done by staff to get to that point. Once we hit fifty percent and they're here, stand back and, you know, it usually happens pretty quick then. I mean, Furbow Street, what, ten days? I mean, it's amazing what happens once they're here working. Ninety percent, work is complete. By that, I mean substantially complete. We still have to have the inspection punch list, this has to be made. And then hundred percent, that means the project has been closed out. They've returned to do the punch list work, it's passed the final inspection, we've made final payment, it's done. All right, next slide, please. So I took the items that were on this spreadsheet, and I put them into a Gantt chart, this is just a summary page for the Gantt chart. I rearranged it a little bit, and I split some of the items out, but they're all in there in one, one form or fashion. So at the top, the blue is the building exterior, the pinkish in the middle is building interior, green at the bottom is outside the building footprint. And I should have just defined what zero percent means. That means we're still in the research phase. Doesn't mean nothing has happened yet, it's just we haven't completed the research. The first two items take a little more than the rest, the solar panels on the roof and ADA entrance options, how we want to perceive of that. So those are separate line items just for the research, and we have six more weeks to finish those before we'll have a scheduled date for the actual work to take place. It's a cyber repair, exterior painting, that should be done by the end of the year. Then on the interior, the board of commissioners seating, we have six weeks to buy new chairs for up there. It's always good to do your HVAC work in the spring and the fall, just in case you're down for a couple days. So March of twenty twenty-five is where we're going to replace the HVAC on the police side. And then the interior painting, the flooring, steam cleaning, these fixings, that needs to happen in that order so we don't mess up something, and that'll start beginning of spring of twenty twenty-five. And then down in the green at the bottom, outside the footprint, paving the trash corral and the shelter for the police department message boards, that'll be by the end of August this year. Then I added that, the next line item, the site, site layout approval, that's when I realized that we might be making a conflict for our future plans. You know, there's been talk of a building expansion, well. You know, there's been talk of a building expansion, well, a generator, where's it going to go? You don't want to put it where it's going to be in the way. And also, how big does it need to be? Depending on how big the expansion is, that's going to influence the size of the generator. So I'll pass the microphone back to the city manager, but before I did that, are there any questions for me about what I presented?
I've got two. First off, as far as the garbage pad, which I assume is here, you go clear that off, is that just going to be a clear spot? Is that where the dumpster is going to go back on top of that once it's cleared off? If not, where is the dumpster going to be or are we using a dumpster? Help me out. What happens once we've removed all that?
Mike, Steve is doing the trash corral, demolition and paving.
It's more on the pavement in front of the corral, about allocated crack pavement from the truck. I think the corral isn't as big as the patio. I don't know what more else we could do to back them and handle that.
I think it's just the asphalt in front of the concrete in the back of the patio. It's just the asphalt.
The second thing is, I was curious, and I know Mayor Protem was real anxious to have the solar panels, and I noticed there at eighty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Estimate. If, how much are we saving money by doing that or is it going to actually end up?
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to that point. We have to do research and the contractor will have to do research on our intellectual expenses and what can I say.
I just want to make sure, I mean, I'm all in favor of solar panels, but I don't want to spend eighty thousand to save five thousand. Okay, those are my questions. Mayor Protem, I'll start with you.
So are the proceedings for the commissioners, are there any problems?
Let's see, who's responsible for the city manager that keeps completing that task? So you can send your request to him, ma'am.
Carl, that was a great presentation and the little picture of are we done yet? Which one of those people went right? I've been listening all this time. Thank you, Carl.
Mr. Albright, any questions?
Mr. Thank you, Carl.
Mr. Gleason, any questions?
None, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkins? Commissioner Way. Thank you, Carl, we appreciate it. All right, that covers that. Okay. All right, then we move to the Davenport Public Financial Services presentation.
All right, so initially, you all are going to hear about the possibilities and see how you all would like to see for the addition on the PD. So with the City Hall Police Department additions in Shale back in twenty twenty-three due to the uncertainty of the, it had been able to fund the entirety of the project. When General Finance Director was here, Carla Hawes, she kind of put it on hold because I think it had reached to a level that the city wouldn't be able to manage and afford. So during the budget process, you all are aware that you are adopted in tax rate, that basically put us where we need to be and not potentially, you know, field cushion for future projects and anything that might be in the future. But from the budget process, the conversation began of what we need to do to plan in the future and for the growth that is going to come, and what we need to do to accommodate the police side because they are running out of space and to prepare for that growth for the additional officers and much is what's needed. So myself, I took the initiative to reach out to Davenport and Company where I'm familiar with their work when I was working in Warren County. So to begin that discussion on, you know, the different funding scenarios into the first phase, so they're going to, I'm not going to take much of what they're going to present, but I just want to let you all know and make, so you all are going into this conversation and discussion, that this is a two-phase process, if you all agree to go have Davenport assist us with this project. The first step would be for Davenport to kind of go into a deep dive and deep research on, you know, the city's financial profile and to look at the budgetary impact if we were to go out for debt on this type of project and the city's ability to assess funds and to, because with a project like this, if we're going to borrow for debt, we have to go to the LGC for approval. So the first step was basically doing that research and make sure the city is in line to, for when we get to that part of actual proceeding with the engineers and going with the construction and actually going out to the bidings for the banks for the different loan rates and interest rates and that we're financially able to do those things. So that's why I reached out to Davenport to assist and see what they could provide to the city for this magnitude of a project. So tonight, we have Mitch, yeah, Mitch from Davenport. Ed Cole assists as well with this project. He's not able to make it on tonight due to other obligations, but Mitch is the Senior Vice President of Davenport Public Finance, so I'm going to let him come in and take the
Great. Mitch, you feel it's been by yourself for the record, no way we didn't get the last thing?
Yes, sir. Mitch, Mitch Bruglio with Davenport and Company, lots of vowels, easier if I just say it. Mitch from Davenport is what I normally get. And Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Manager, appreciate you all having us this evening. Mr. Fain's reached out to us. You know, this is kind of right up our alley, what we do. And I think you all have a copy of just a little five or six pages. I'll give you very quick commercial on the front end, just so you know who we are, and then get into the thought process, I think, behind our engagement. So just big picture, Davenport and Company LLC, we've been around since eighteen sixty-three, headquartered in Richmond, Virginia, but we have twenty-one offices throughout, really, the two-state area of Virginia and North Carolina, one office up in Maryland, four offices in North Carolina, one is public finance, which is my office in Charlotte, and that's really what we're here to talk about tonight is public finance. It's part of that, we have a team of thirty-five professionals within our public finance group. Davenport as a whole has over four hundred employees, but thirty-five in our group of public finance, which provides largely financial advisory services to cities, counties, towns like yourself. Just, again, commercial-wise, right? We've got some experience. For the last ten years, we've done over two thousand transactions, over sixty billion of financing. So, and that's throughout our footprint, which is largely Maryland down to Georgia, but we do work in some states outside of that footprint as well. But I think, you know, having that sort of broader perspective of a lot of work inside North Carolina but outside gives us a little flavor for what's going on in other areas. Specific to North Carolina, this is just a list of some of our select clients served over the years. I did put some notations on there for you, just for a little bit of perspective. The blue font is folks in this Raleigh-Durham-Carry combined statistical area, so basically your neighbors in the region, and that, you know, includes folks like the county who we've worked with for a number of years. And then the asterisk cities and towns are ones that have population of under twenty thousand. And I think that's important. We work with large cities and counties, you know, we work with nine of the top twenty cities and, you know, two of the top three counties in the state, but we also work with folks like yourselves with populations under five thousand. And, you know, folks like, you know, town of Pittsboro, town of Spindale, you know, some slightly larger ones in Wake County, town of Wendell, Rollsville, Zebulon. So a wide range of clients that we're able to work with, but all doing the same thing, right? It's figuring out what your capital projects are that you'd like to fund, what it's going to cost, and how can you fund it. And so that's, that process is the same whether you have, you know, four thousand people or whether you have nine hundred thousand people, it's just an order of magnitude, how many zeros come after it. But we generally follow the same process. Page five kind of gives you a menu of some of the services that we provide. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Everywhere is different and some folks like more services than others, but this is just a big picture of some of those various services that we do provide as a financial advisor. I think it's important to note, as a financial advisor, you may hear it referred to as a municipal advisor. That means we are a fiduciary to the city, right? We sit on the same side of the table as you during a financing process and look out for your interests. We are by law, by regulation, required to put your interests above ours and we take that very seriously. And that is throughout the issuance process, from right now talking about what we can do for you to the closing of a financing and making sure you're taken care of after that. And I think that's an important note along the way. Specific to you all, summary here on page six of what we would envision, how we would envision this engagement playing out. Let me first off say, you know, we've had the opportunity to work together in the past and we're here to work with you all to provide you the information you all need, both board and staff, to make decisions. And so while we've sketched out what we think might make sense as a sort of starting point and how the engagement could roll out, we take our direction from you all. So happy to adjust in any way as needed. But big picture, what we see for, is a phase one start of the engagement and call this a financial review and assessment report, but it's whatever information you need to kick off the decision-making process. And the first thing we would do is go through and do an overview of your existing financial and credit profile. You're talking about funding some potential projects, namely, you know, expansion of the police department, but perhaps other projects as well. And that, given the initial feedback, may require some debt issuance, may not, but if we are going to consider debt as a tool in this process, need to make sure that you have, or set up in a way that you have access to what we call the capital markets, access to borrow debt. And in order to do that, we have to understand your historical financial performance, how will a bank or other lenders evaluate your credit profile? And as part of that process, compare you to others to understand how you stack up as a metric of that financial and credit profile. And then along the way, we can either review or assist in developing financial policy guidelines and benchmarks. Second piece of this, and I think this is a particular note to your next flip-flop topic, but I actually think it was very appropriate that those got flip-flopped because it really is a chicken or the egg discussion here, and I'll explain what I mean by that through this next bullet, next series of bullets. So it's kind of the second part of this phase one is what we call debt capacity or capital funding capacity and capital funding affordability. And we break those out separately because we view them as two separate items, and I'll explain that. Capacity, capital funding capacity, in particular debt capacity, is a measure of your ability to issue debt or fund capital projects within a series of financial policies or financial metrics. So things like debt outstanding as a percentage of your assessed value. We know there's a state statute that limits you to eight percent, but the reality of it is, to have adequate credit to borrow money, you can't get close to eight percent. Typically, it's more, you know, the two to four percent range on the high end. So what we'll do as part of that is understand where you stand today and how much debt could you issue under a series of key metrics? How much capital could you fund from, within your fund balance policy is another metric we look at? And kind of establish through that your capacity to fund additional capital projects within your current profile. And then related, but different, is your capital funding or your debt affordability. I equate this to going out, if you're looking to buy a home, right? You go out, you may get pre-qualified for your mortgage. A bank may say, based upon your financial profile, we're willing to lend you two hundred thousand dollars for a mortgage to buy a home. That's kind of your debt capacity, right? We've established that on the front end. But then I have to understand what is my debt affordability? What is my cash flow available to make those monthly mortgage payments, for example? And, you know, I may have, you know, know I need to get a new car, know my children are going to daycare, know I have some elderly parents in the future I've got to take care of, or a refrigerator that needs to be replaced. And I may decide, it's great the bank is willing to lend me two hundred thousand to buy a home, but I really can only afford the payments on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage. And so that's my debt affordability, right? Same concept. What funds do you have available within your existing budget and/or what funds do you project to be available in the future? Whether that be through growth, through expense savings, through new revenues that you put in place? And that's really going to be a measure of your debt affordability. And those two things combined give us some perspective on what size project or projects can you fund through this process? And that's where I come back to the chicken and the egg, right? You're looking at projects, well, the question is, can you afford the level of projects that you want? And then vice versa, well, we can afford this much, so should we put the, should we do a project that, within that and just design it to that? So I think it's good that both things are going on in tandem. Don't necessarily want one to influence the other, it's nice to have them kind of separate to start with, and then you bring them together and say, okay, how do these stack up? And you work to refine both from there. So that's kind of where we are. Oops, sorry. The last piece of this is, sorry, is that you or me? Sorry. The last piece of this too will be, I don't want, I don't mean this in the way it sounds, but it may be a little bit of an education process or a review process of what are your options for capital funding and your debt funding options? If you do choose to issue debt to fund a capital project like this, make you all aware of the options and decisions you'll be making down the road if you choose to go that route when you're considering whether to move forward with a project. And in particular, I think, understanding what the local government commission's requirements are, like Mr. Fain's mentioned, because there are a series of requirements that we'll have to meet in order to get approval for debt from the local government commission. That's kind of the other component of that ability to access the capital markets. Great if a bank is willing to lend us money, but if we can't get approval from the local government commission, it's not going to do us much good anyway. So kind of roll all that together, that conversation together in this phase one. And that's something that I think, depending upon availability of information, I think we could be in a position to deliver that to you in, say, four to eight weeks, depending upon what your timeframe, your meeting schedule looks like, when the information is available. But certainly, depending upon, you know, what you'd like to do, could accelerate that or could delay it, just wanted to give you some perspective that we're ready to get started whenever you all are ready. And then, sorry, last thing, go back to that page real quick. And then last thing, just kind of going forward, future phases of the engagement would be kind of dependent upon you all and what decisions are made and what you request of us. But that could be transaction-related services, helping you put an actual financing in place if there's a need to do so to fund a project, as well as other non-transactions or planning services, capital improvement plans. How do you fund a capital improvement plan? What are your options there? And I think part of that is, is part of, into phase one, is how does this impact other projects that you want to fund? If we're just focused on one project, how does that impact your ability to fund other projects in the future? And/or are there other projects that you would like us to include in this phase one analysis for additional perspective? analysis for additional perspective? So those are just examples of future phases of the engagement, depending upon how things evolve through the phase one process. I've had a long meeting and I probably spoke for way too long, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Places of your company. I'm formerly, we're not borrowing money, so I'm trying to keep it all this stuff. We basically, if we contract with you as, for a specific project and that project, there is no, in long notice, we pay for your services when we need your services.
When you need them, yes, sir. And I think the agreement that we shared with Mr. Faines is it's an advisory agreement where we would be engaged as your advisor. And then there's an addendum to that agreement for this initial, what I've described as phase one. And if that's all you need from us and you don't need anything else, we just, we sit tight and we wait until you need anything else from us. And if you do need something else, then we would go back within that agreement and provide an estimate of what that would be and we can move forward.
Well, I noticed that the list you've had here of people you all have dealt with, and I think I'm familiar with some of the mayors that they even, of course, Grandville County, we have plenty of people we can call, so.
Please, would welcome that. And, you know, some of these folks, you know, like you just admitted, some of them are more of call us when they need us and others are more annual ongoing engagements. And we've done a lot of work on the capital planning side with the county over the last eight to 10 months as they've been working on that process. So happy for you to reach out to any of our folks.
Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Way.
I'll leave the background of this information to our financial, very capable director over there.
Mr. Faines.
I guess that my question is, you've done large and small municipalities.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you've had any ability to look at the financials of the city of Creedmoor? And are we in pretty good shape compared to a lot of people or?
Yeah, I mean, and that's part of what we would dig into further, but gut reaction, looking at some very high-level stuff is, I mean, I think it's fair to say that you'll have the ability to access the capital markets for our money. And then from there, it's working with staff to kind of dig into the numbers a little bit more and what does that, what does it mean on a forward-looking basis? That's where the financial reports and the numbers don't necessarily give the story behind it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Prossian.
I, um, and excited about this. We saw that after we adopted some of the projects we called, we're going to get done, we told it to the internet after we spent a maximum of dollars. I feel, um, I'm really glad after you're putting these, putting in front of the card this time, when I'm calling you and thanking you for your time, you've been there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Albright.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Pam.
Will be in touch?
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing I'd like to add, so, thanks all around here tonight. After the meeting, I was ready to report on the mayor's agenda, that's going to be a special, uh, what's coming all, uh, turning you to the other three, I recognize before the law, that you're going to be supporting all of these authorized sets, uh, projects that will go forward.
The consensus I have is the best preparation will go in the body.
The body that we just went through, that's on the record, so you can.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And that's, you know, June 30, 23, which, congratulations, pretty awesome to get that done ahead of the deadline. And, you know, 24 appears to be going very well, right? And a nice surplus compared to budget, which is awesome. And so I think those are all positive things, right? And what we need to understand a little bit more, what doesn't come out in the numbers, right, is the story behind that and what's the expectation going forward based upon what you're seeing here on the ground? That's what we'll be digging into to try to understand a little more.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we move to line 10E, City Police Department Expansion Discussion.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the FY 2023, as Lee mentioned earlier, the interim finance director, Carl Hobbs, had recommended to the board that the two-story police department building was shelved as it morphed in size quite a bit from three or four million up to nine million. So it was shelved until further discussion due to construction overruns. During the FY 2025 budget workshops, the need to revisit the police department space needs came up several times in board discussions. In anticipation of significant population growth following Suwasa's infrastructure enhancements, the mayor asked myself to pull the February 5, 2022 CEPI conceptual site plan entitled Concept Number Two and calculate a cost in $2024, what it might cost to build that addition. Concept Two was a 4,800 square foot proposed addition to the west side of the building. Using a 2024 construction square foot cost estimate of $450 to $500 per square foot, the 4,800 square foot addition would cost an estimated $2,400,000 for construction. To confirm those numbers were close, I contacted Scott Phillips in Grandville County, who just recently put out for bid and is in the process of putting a new Grandville County Senior Services Center in northern Grandville County. So his numbers were slightly lower than this, so we know these numbers are fairly good. So the 4,800 square foot would cost an estimated $2,400,000 for construction. An estimated, an additional $600,000 would also be needed for architectural design, site work, engineering costs, parking lot work, and other possible contingencies for an estimated total of $3 million. Scenario would give PD some much-needed growth space in anticipation of the 2030 population increase and possibly allow the community development office to vacate leased space on Main Street and move into a portion of the existing City Hall Police Department area. If the Board of Commissioners is in agreement, a consensus motion would be in order to bring an architectural firm onboard to revisit one or more expansion options, and it may not be Scenario Two. They may come up with another one that's more viable and make more sense. To prepare preliminary design floor plans with Chief Willis' input, which we have not had, we had King's, along with a more defined construction cost estimate. Little Architects is one possibility as they're very familiar with the City Hall site plan, departmental needs, and they've already got many of the files on hand on CAD. The next thing I'd like to point your attention is the conceptual on the next page. A is existing City Hall building. B is Scenario Two is an addition of the police department with parking, additional parking you can see added to the south and to the west of that B, the building. So A is the 7,500 existing square foot and PD has approximately 4,000 of that now. Admin has about 3,500 for the total. You've got the 4,800, B is a 4,800 square foot addition. Letter number C is a stormwater retention device. D is parking lot to support, public parking and parking to support the expansion. I will tell you that if we share part of the existing space PD's in and bring CDO over, they currently have, I think the last number I got from Mike was 1,117 square foot. And if we allocate 2,000 square foot of the existing City Hall to move Mike, then we'll reduce or eliminate the need for the leased space on Main Street. That would leave the police department with 4,800 plus the 2,000 in City Hall and bring them up to like 6,800 square feet. And these are just, I'm thinking outside of the box here with all these numbers. These could very well change when an architect comes in and starts programming and talking to Chief Willis and some of those things. I do want to bring to the board's attention the big sheet that I gave you, the handout with the yellow on it. So you've orientated with City Hall, you see Scenario Two B, stormwater device D. And the highlighted line you see there, the dotted line that goes through B is the back of the existing curve, curb of the parking lot, the police department parking lot. Everything from the west of B is all the existing gravel parking lot area. That's important because this decision would need to be worked and evaluated. Before we spend a nickel in Elm Street, that 10,000 or 12,000 we had planned on grading and graveling, we don't want to do this and have to come back and make changes once the architect comes back with a recommendation. The other critical piece to this is the red square you see just north of B.
It could be.
That is the existing location of the generator that's part of this City Hall renovation, which you can tell from that, and will have to be moved. So that location needs to be predetermined early on as possible. So our renovations and the people that are working estimates and running numbers, and if we change this from diesel to natural gas, Dominican Republic, different people are going to need to know where these things move.
Dominican.
Dominican Energy.
That's a long guy.
Thank you.
I don't hear many things.
They're thinking about vacation.
That's what I, by the way, thanks for the help there, guys. Okay. So that's the overlay and you can see if this Scenario Two goes into effect, it's going to push things back to the west. So we need to move with this as quickly as possible. If the board's in favor of trying to come up with a solution for PD's needs, which are three years out or so, that's pretty important stuff there. I will tell you that Mike has 1,171. This would allow 2,000 square feet for him to come over. I think he would be excited about the opportunity to move over and get onto one roof with us. Mike, do you have anything to add to that before the board may have any questions?
Please is not part of the.
Well, I was going to start with please. I was going to start with please. But then the next thing that I'm going to say is that I did send Florida Little Bloom over to our friends at Little and all of the same folks are still there intact and they would love the opportunity to come back to Creedmoor and work on this project. They do have all the files, like Mike said, they're very familiar, surveying detail, CAD details, a lot of work that was done. And this is a good place to start, but of course, there's a lot more to it, you know? We cracked to the other building into a separate location and all the things that accompanied that. This kind of brings us back into hopefully a smaller project that still satisfies all our needs. And that's the goal.
And I don't think we can continue to put this off with the anticipated growth that we've got coming. The longer we do it, the more expensive it's going to get, take and be built. And to be honest with you, there's no question, we have to be prepared for these developments coming in before they come in. Can't wait till they're here and we're getting tax money to do this.
Mr. Wilkins.
What would be the approximate cost of a pair preliminary design plan? I know you can't give an exact.
I would say percent of the ultimate construction cost is a general rule of thumb. If Mike estimated somewhere around three million, maybe we're in the 3,000 range, that'd be about the best kind of thumb to stand up on the.
And project costs 240,000, so maybe 240, quarter of a million, but that's, the 600,000 is a round number. These are round numbers and we need to get somebody in with professional estimates to help us nail this down. And that is one of the reasons that when I talked to Lee about this, he recommended getting Davenport in, who gives financial advice. And if this is a three or four million dollar project, they can tell us what those financing options are, what the amount might be down, the amount that needs to be financed, the terms of years, the interest rate, and assistance with the LGC. And that was the reason I had it in the order, because this $3 million thing is kind of new to most of y'all, I think.
Yeah. I say, let's go.
Mr. Albright.
I just, you know, and I know we'll talk about it at the next meeting, but I just want to make sure that, you know, this is something that we all agree on and this is something that we know we need to do, but we just have to make sure that we're financially ready for it and, you know, prepared with all those things. But I know that you'll prepare us for those things, so I'm not too worried about it. That's just my thoughts.
And that's the other reason that when Lee and Mike brought my attention about getting Davenport in here, rather than us trying to guess if what we need to do, we'll have somebody in here to us. And this will benefit us in the long run in that this will not be the last project City of Creedmoor ever does that they're going to need to borrow money for. So that kind of gives us a foothold in the door.
Make sure that we got the money.
Afford it, yeah.
When we're using our money.
Mayor Prossian.
So I was, I dug through all these old pictures and pulled out Concept Two myself. And I think you and I talked about it right before you talked to Mike and checked with the chief and said, is this going to be enough space? And take a walk, take a walk through there and see how jammed up they are in there. Mike, my question to you, Mr. Frango, sorry. It says an additional 600,000 estimate would be needed for architectural design, site work, engineering. They've got the basics. They've done the geology and stuff and everything else.
That money's already.
So it doesn't, it's not going to cost us another half a million dollars.
Where are you reading that number from? Is that on this sheet?
It's on the sheet that's in.
That Mike came, that came.
But that was from a year ago, right?
That was a summary I did this time around, yeah. It was an estimation to round it up to three, thinking we're going to need much, but we don't know how much it could go to three and a half. That, I don't know.
And I do agree that because we are considering this, we need to leave that parking lot alone for right now until we decide which way we're going and maybe Little will have a better idea. I like the idea of going back to Little because they've done the preliminary work. We may be able to save a little bit of money with the fact that they're familiar with the property and the building and they know our needs beforehand. So.
And they know the problem.
There's, chief, I'm going to ask you a question. There's no Sally Port in this design, correct?
Correct.
Do you not need a Sally Port?
I do have a Sally Port.
Okay. All right.
I know some of your officers would like to have one, but, yeah, it just.
Or that everything.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, he's got the Corvette parked.
I need somewhere to park my Corvette, so we want to make sure. That'll be in the paper next week. Mayor.
Well, I'm excited and Mike, I mean, the money we pay on the lease, we'd have to lease that space for a million, for 100 years to come up to the money that we're spending here, but I know that being in this building is important. I just wish to God we could do something about the two doors on this building, because I can't stand two entrances on this building. I wish it was all on the back end here. But other than that, I'm all in favor of this. I'm hoping that we can get it done this time. And Lee, thanks for trying to help us get ahead of this.
You're good.
Kevin, get ready, buddy. You've got a lot of work ahead of you.
I can see his watch start to climb and eye turns on his plan. Commissioner Gleason.
Well, I'm happy with this. I think we've kind of come back to reality. This will give us what we need and something that we can afford.
Mr. Way.
I would just make sure the construction design, as we go forward, would accommodate a second story for that building for expansion if needed.
Some architectural considerations, I'm sure, that they'll take into account.
All right. Well, I think the general consensus is, and I can assume that, let's take it and go with it.
Yep. I will reach out to Little and we'll ask them exactly for scope, if they can give to us. And I'll. give to us, and we'll see how we can proceed from there. They'll be very happy to hear that we want them back, which I think is great. Um, the only thing I'll say from a non-financial person, witnessing all this and being through this these last couple of years, Carla was familiar with all of our operating and everything we did in the operating budget, she didn't know the big picture of the capital reserve. I think there were things that she might not have been fully aware of when she made the decision, you know, that she made and gave the advice that she gave. And it's fine that we were cautious, but I think with the firm now, we're going to have a better understanding of the full budget.
Which is always better.
And that's why we're not getting too far and pulling out of our comfort of state of energy.
Right. Right.
Ms. Frangos, once again, Lee, as always, thank you very much.
All right. Um, anybody need to go? All right, let's take a quick five-minute break.
Okay. I've got my stuff ready.
Look, y'all can't take vacation like that, number one.
Like what?
They move a meeting, I'm here having, I feel like I'm back on the committee meeting of a boycott, I got on.
Well, it was just that the two of us went at the same time, but I always take it.
We ain't going to be here to.
No, those days hopefully are over.
And if he ever comes back and becomes a member of the board, you're going to have him, you may.
Funny. I had to go to Board of Elections, honey, for that. Yeah, because he stood with me, and he was running, and I filled out the form, and said I could, you know, a thousand dollars, and then I had to make two financial reports, two financials. Well, I shouldn't have done it, because I knew I was going to spread it out, and I wanted to take the money. But anyway, I had to go there and go out my final. She said to me.
Commissioner, I keep thinking we go to. Your brother intern. We go to.
Mr. Mayor, David Hyder, how you doing?
David, good to see you, sir. Good to see you.
What can I do for you?
Oh, not much, I was just going to hand out two bits, a couple of bits from start.
All right, thank you.
I want you to know that.
Thank you.
That I'm in, I'm in Raleigh about, well, that's one for me and one for, one for Mark, one for each of us.
I've got one.
Ah, there's one for each of us, thank you.
Sir, can we get our sign in done?
But anyway, we enjoy coming up, and if you need anything, I'm in Raleigh about once, once, once a month, so.
Well, Debbie, there's one of mine.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate it.
Big to be direct.
Yeah.
George.
Thanks, sir. Um, yeah, I've got that rest in my phone, but we go by Wilson on the way to M O R, and go to the beach, and I keep running myself, just ride by and see where he lives, but I'm happy with the beauty of it.
You can meet there, I'll ride by, I'll go to your house, right at the beach.
That's fine.
So, there's that's a minute.
Three grand a week, you can rent the place.
I ain't got that kind of money.
That's foreign language, I ain't got that type of cash. It definitely ain't mayor code.
Amen to that one, sir. One more, oops, sorry. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
Is everybody back? Let's get out of here soon as we can. Is anybody else ready to go?
No, I, I want to, I want to proceed.
Uh, Emma, no, Emma's right. Just get out of here soon as we can.
You know, I, when I was working at the drug store, I did, and I could hold it from nine p.m. until seven at night. Now, I'm lucky, I can sleep through the night. Oh, yeah. I can't sleep through the night, but I can get through this week.
All right, um, we are now back in session, and we're moving to, uh-huh, what? Ten F, Grandville County Board of Education Master Identification Agreement, City Manager.
Mayor, Mayor Proten, members of the board, um, on June the fourth, I was approached by the Grandville County School Superintendent Stan Winborn, requesting the possible use of the Cretemore Community Center Gymnasium for Holly Middle School to use for girls' volleyball practice games and possibly boys' basketball practice games. Uh, the period of interest was August twelfth through October thirty-one of this year. Um, in accordance with the community center application, rentals of the facility require a certificate of insurance, which the Grandville County Public School System cannot provide since they're not technically covered by an insurance policy. Um, in the absence of the COI, City Attorney Hornick recommended that the city ask the G- Grandville County Schools to enter into a master indemnification agreement. The master, uh, agreement would allow schools in the system to use the facility for sporting events other than volleyball. They specifically asked for Holly, and they specifically asked for soccer and basketball. But if we're going to do this on occasion with other schools, it just made sense not to do individual contracts with each school as they approach us, but have a city agreement with the school system that allows any school in any sporting event that we can accommodate, and they're willing to pay our rates to use our facility. And the rates set applied will be the FY twenty-five standard fee and rate schedule that was approved by the board. The fact that they're multiple uses gives them a twenty percent discount on multiple users. Um, so the agreement has been drafted up, it, it allows all schools, it allows sports, it allows standard fees, twenty percent discount, it requires security provided by the school system, it requires school point of contact, when they're on property, they must have a coach or a designated representative here. Uh, it could possibly generate two hundred and seventy dollars a week or three thousand two hundred and forty dollars over twelve weeks, there's thirty-six dates. Um, so there is some benefit to the city, but after talking to the city attorney, it just made more sense to do a, a general agreement that would cover more than just one event, and just have to come back and redo it for Cretemore Elementary or some other school. So, um, with that, I'll just stop for questions or give Kevin an opportunity to kick in here.
Um, do you want to hear questions first or kick in first?
I'm happy to.
Which may get done with everything you need to do. Commissioner Albright, any questions?
No, no, I think we're ready.
Mayor Proten, any questions?
Um, I think it's a great idea, um, I didn't realize they didn't have an insurance certificate. Um, because Commissioner May is here, and the county holds the purse strings for the school, um, if there is a major financial damage to the community center or something, I mean, a lawsuit that ensues for a lot of money, what if they can't pay it?
Well, there'll be a judgment obtained, and I would suppose, I guess, that the.
We will assume.
The, the school system, that, that would be someone that would have to be judged by the state.
You didn't hear that.
I just find it amazing that they don't have an insurance policy.
Well, I, I think to clarify, it's not, from what I understand anyway, public school systems have a separate, uh, sort of how municipalities have their own non-risk pool insurance program for weed, uh, school systems have something similar, it's technically not, uh, insurance policy, it's just a trust fund out of which claims or judgments or damages intended to the school system will be paid, and so they, they just can't provide some kind of insurance, because there's no insurance policy to, to which they can add the city as an additional insurer. So, that's kind of what gave rise to this, that we, we thought about perhaps having school system sign individual identification agreements for each event or use of the facility. We thought since we really don't know at this stage how many events, whether it would be limited just to the, the girls volleyball team, or maybe our sports, we thought it would make more sense to implement one master facility use agreement, which would include an identification provision, and then, uh, the school system can, under that agreement, uh, reserve time at the facility, kind of on a rolling, for as needed basis.
Okay.
Commissioner Gleason.
I have no problem with this, it's pretty good. Was the Parks and Rec talked to about this, and would this affect them in any way?
Um, Angie Perry, events coordinator, and I met with Stan and had multiple discussions with his representative, Courtney Kern, I believe it is, uh, they're, they're involved, yes, sir.
Good. That's it. Mr. Wilkins.
As I said, my email looks good to me.
Mr. Way. Sounds good to me, the only problem I have is, I'm, I'm concerned that we're renting this thing, which we need to rent it out.
Yeah.
But I'm worried about our members and our, our citizens losing ground on when they can use.
Um, it, the requested timeframe was three to six in the afternoons, and, uh, Parks and Rec staff, and I'm speaking for Angie, and I know she's talking to Dennis, didn't have any conflict with that period of time for current users.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that our people, especially our pickleball players, because they, they get kind of moved easily. All right, um, I think I covered everybody. All right, I think we need a motion to approve the master identification agreement. Mr. Wilkins has made the motion, all those in favor say aye. All right. Hopes no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager. All right, move to ten G, low to moderate elderly income assistance, Mr. Wilkins.
Yes, sir, thank you, I just want to know what, if anything, from the attorney that we could do to assist the, that income level.
So, I think as we've talked about, uh, in other contexts, the city can only expand public funds for a ton of, you know, of a remit public benefits on charities or. Um, I, I think, I'm going to give you the, the lawyer's answer here, and I apologize beforehand, but I think the answer is it kind of depends on how the program is structured, on exactly what that, uh, low to moderate income assistance looks like, um, you know, and, and, and what, you know, the, the benefits the city is kind of gain in exchange. I think that there is no reason, at least conceptually, why, uh, a hypothetical assistance program could not be implemented by the city, but I think that it, it will take a lot of work to kind of iron out what is that, you know, how that program will operate, how specifically the city's funds will be used, um, you know, and, and we'll need to make sure that we're very comfortable that there's, um, kind of a comparable benefit received by the city, kind of in exchange for, for expenditure of this fund.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, can we look into that, if the board encourages, allow the attorney to further, further investigate that?
Anybody have any questions for the city attorney?
And I'll say, I think what I can do is we can, uh, our office can look into, um, kind of general, you know, low moderate income assistance programs that have been implemented by other municipalities across the state, and maybe prepare, you know, a memorandum from the board, um, summarizing our findings, and to the extent that the findings dictate, maybe, uh, preparing a couple of recommendations or, or forces of action.
That'd be great.
All right, any objections?
No, I, like I said, I think reinventing the wheel is not a good idea, if there's a lot that are already doing it that we can look at.
Oh, yeah, I agree, so, yeah, that's the consensus. Oh, Commissioner Albright.
So, I just want to know what, what exactly are we aiming to do for the citizens? Like, I know there's, um, like, Wake and Duke Electric have, you know, programs that you can get help with for that, um, there's all kinds of things for DHHS or whatever that I know that helps with low income, you know, things, like, but what exactly are we looking to do for the citizens? You know, I mean, if there's home improvements, that should be the people that they're either renting from or that own the homes that they're living in, like, what is the, I'm just looking at, like, what are we?
That's what he's going to find out.
Right, and, and I don't have an answer to that, I'm proposing that.
Oh, I was actually aiming at, more like, more like at you, because this is your, your baby, so I was wondering what you intend, what you.
Whatever you can come up with, I'm not sure.
I think what I'm suggesting is that we, we would do a survey of, you know, programs along the lines of, kind of, the couple that you've mentioned, and we would explain the legal basis, you know, why, uh, if program X, Y, or Z, uh, can justifiably expand public funds for this purpose. And that way, this board, I think, will have some idea of the variety of different, you know, uh, low to moderate income assistance programs that, you know, other local governments or public or private partnership, um, entities have implemented elsewhere in the state, and, and why, uh, they can do those things under the general law. And I think that would put this board in a position to say that, you know, we think, um, you know, a handful of these are good options, and, and we think that we might have legal authority to implement those, and we think, you know, a couple other of these options are maybe not good fits for our community. So, I think that's a long way to say, hopefully, what we can provide to you is kind of a menu or a list of things that would explain, you know, what your options are, and then be able to support the choose which.
That's what I'm looking for, let's see what we can do, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, the deal consensus is to, take a look. All right, let's see, we've got, uh, income assistance, all right, I believe the next one is Senate Bill eighty-eight, Mr. Wilkins.
Once again, uh, City Attorney, I'm just looking what, how that would affect us as a local municipality.
So, I, I think, um, the, the most, what, the, the way this is most likely it becomes law to impact the city and other local governments throughout the state, uh, is what, at least the relevant portion of this bill proposes, is that if the General Assembly and actual legislation that impacts, uh, local government elections, um, or certain aspects of local government elections, the local government would not be able to take action to change, uh, whatever was required by the local bill until the next election after the next.
Presidency.
Uh, sentence.
Census, that's right.
So, uh, for instance, if the General Assembly were to come in and use their authority to adopt a local legislation that expanded Cretemore Department of Commissioners to fifteen members, uh, the city could not effectively undo that by local, forgive my, amendment, I'm going to walk out, the charter amendment, uh, until act, well, well, the act is, the city could, through its own municipal power, amend its charter to kind of override or undo that local legislation, but that, um, you know, local act, or, or act by the, the city rather than confusing local act and local legislation, I'll make sure that we're not, uh, confusing the two, but it would not become effective until the next election cycle after the upcoming sentence.
Twenty thirty seven.
So, I think the idea is that, like, you know, that, example, local government can't undo what the legislation, uh, what the General Assembly does in local legislation for a period of time after the local act is implemented.
But do they telephone that time is up in their legislation? Do they set a definite date, or do we just kind of wait?
But it would not become effective until the next election cycle after the upcoming sentence.
Twenty thirty seven.
So I think the idea is that, like, you know, that example, local government can't undo what the legislation, uh, what the General Assembly does in local legislation for a period of time after the local act is implemented.
But do they tell us when that term is up in their legislation? Do they set a definite date, or do we just kind of wait?
If, if for any, at any local act affecting, there, there are very specific provisions of Chapter one sixty-eight, uh, Section one and one, um, that applies to, so I'll, I'll pull it up for you if you'd like, but it's, effectively, it's not some of the provisions that we talked about when we amended, uh, the city charter to extend the mayor's term. So for instance, if, uh, the General Assembly were to adopt a local act that the mayor's term's got to go back down to two years for the city Creedmore, we'd be stuck with a two-year term until after, the first election after the twenty-third sentence, even though we just amended ours to, uh, to extend it.
Would you have to go through the same process we did to bring it back, or would it...
Yes, we would have to, we would have to...
It would automatically revert, but...
That's right.
Commissioner Albright?
So, this overview here on Senate Bill eighty-eight, which I think is what Commissioner was asking about, so do these things fall into line with us right now, or is this something that they're working on as far, because I think this is what he was actually asking about.
Which, which for me?
The overview, the amendment.
Well, what, do we have a specific provision or the overview of the...
Mm-hmm. Is there...
Yeah, I, I, I think, well, I, if I can't speak for the county board of elections, but as far as I'm aware, uh, you know, this will not have a, a substantial impact on, and, you know, the other board of elections to figure that out eventually. So the, the only thing that will have, that technically have a direct impact on the city in, uh, this proposed bill is that, uh, that provision about, you know, local acts.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But this does have stuff written in it too about, you know, checking election, um, signatures.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like a new signature machine that's going to check signatures and things like that. So I think that would probably, you know, play into us eventually once they got, you know, the bums worked out of that and that's their...
Well, that would be something for the board of elections that, you know, serve, that serve, you know, the, the city has no authority to adopt or implement any of these, any of these regulations. And so I, I can't speak to, because we don't do any of this, I can't speak to this.
Right, it would just be something that keeps down the pipeline, there's nothing that we can do about that.
Is in line with that, not, we don't have any role in that.
Right. Yes, this does require the community to watch you, Mr. Albright.
Commissioner Way, any questions? Mr. Gleason?
Oh, excuse me, I'm...
Uh, Commissioner Wilkins, are you satisfied?
I am, sir, thank you.
Mr. Albright, you've asked your question. Mayor Pro Temp?
No question.
All right, let's move along. Discussion items, eleven A, modification judicial district approval on Hillsborough Street. Mayor Pro Temp?
So, when you have the, the gentleman, and we did a, um, approval to give him three years, two years to put a sidewalk in, uh, Hillsborough Street, when it was covered as a t-shirt factory. And I was asking the other day, because I noticed that the sidewalk still wasn't done, and had no idea. So then I was told that, um, Mr. Frangos had, he had, the, the property owner came to Mr. Frangos and asked for another year extension to get a sidewalk in, and I was wondering why, if the ordinance says the sidewalk has to begin in a year, and we had to make an extension to, to update the ordinance. Why would that person not have to come back to this board for another year extension? Why would it be allowed to be done at the CBO level?
Because I think that this would be, this meets the CEO's threshold for a minor modification to a conditional zoning decision. And so it's something that the zoning administrator has the authority to, to grant an extension. Anything that is not considered a minor modification is by default a major modification. In that case, they would come back to this board, and they would have to go through the entire zoning, you know, amendment process, including referral to the planning board, um, you know, legislative public hearing, or you all, and adoption of a separate ordinance to implement the change. But this, I don't, in my opinion, I think meets the definition of a minor modification, and that's sort of the criteria for a minor modification, as spelled out in the CEO.
So when I look at this, my, major amendment and minor modification, the descriptions are extremely vague, extremely vague, and I would like to see something more...
Specific.
...definitive in the difference between minor and major. But the reason I brought this up tonight, aside from that, is I would like to ask the board for a vote, I'd like to make a motion that this property is not given any further extensions for the sidewalk. We've extended him two years, it's been extended one more year, I'm not going to argue with that, but I'm going to ask this board, do we, we have the authority to say no more?
I don't, I, I think that that's a, that's a, I believe this is a question that was brought up to me before we were talking about this in the Senate public hearing. Uh, I think that, I don't know that the, that the board can say that right now. I think that the city manager can instruct the zoning administrator not to proceed with any future extensions.
Extensions.
But what you're proposing right now is that, is that we do effectively a major modification without going through the appropriate procedures, and I don't think the board can do that, to be...
So can we make a request to the city manager?
I, I think that, well, I don't think that the board should take any formal action. I think the city manager is probably well aware right now that this action, not taking any action.
No sin.
Right, but that's just my opinion. I would like the opinion of the board. I don't, I, I don't have the right to make that call on my own, but I just feel that if we're going to keep our city up and looking nice, and we gave somebody an extension for their sidewalk, and it's part of our ordinance that the sidewalk be put in, I would ask that no more extensions be given, the sidewalk needs to be installed, and that's, that's my, and I, I'd like to have, I'd like to find out how the board feels about it, um, before we make a statement and ask the city manager to, to do anything further.
Mr. Way, would you like to weigh in?
I mean, if we're going to do it for one, we have to do it for everybody. As far as the new rules and sidewalk extensions and, and things of that nature, um, I think Mr. Frangos has pretty much got that under control when he's dealing with these people in the city.
Oh, they do, forever. Never.
I would definitely leave that up to the management of the city, with those individuals that are familiar with the ins and outs of the codes and laws and things of that nature.
And, and what I will say is that if there is a desire on the board to say, for example, uh, you know, an applicant is only entitled to one extension of a deadline, I think the appropriate way to manage that would be to go through the enforcement process and amend Section seven point one five of the CEO to, to, to state that clearly.
I mean, my concern is that we come back every year and get another extension, another extension, another extension, and the sidewalk is never installed. And when we are telling other people they have to put sidewalks in, that's not fair to them. So that is what I'm trying, but that's a great idea, Kevin, we do a, there'd be one extension, uh, do the amendment to the ordinance and, and do a one extension.
I mean, I would like to add, Mr. Mayor, I believe there was several, um, things that had to be completed. Is that correct, Mr. Frangos?
Yeah, I have heard Commissioner, and he's done it.
The sidewalk, landscaping, the streams, and cleaning up of the parking lot, yeah.
He's done everything but, but the sidewalk.
How could he do the landscaping before the sidewalk goes in?
Well, because the landscaping was motioned there. There is landscaping right now that exists by the time, the sidewalk would then remove that landscaping with the cost.
Okay.
Commissioner Albright?
Um, I think maybe, since it was a little, I don't know if it was a surprise, but I think maybe if, um, maybe you would have emailed us and said, you know, I have extended his, you know, sidewalk for another year, and this was why, well, you know, I think maybe if there'd have been, and I know you have the authority to do it, because that's what Kevin said, and it's like Commissioner Way said, you know much more about these things than we do. But maybe if it would have been a little bit more open and you would have said, you know, I have extended his, you know, he has one more year to get the sidewalks in, I don't know, maybe that would have helped with moving forward or not, but just, it's just, I'm just talking out loud, it's just my...
Commissioner Gleason? I believe that the city commissioner, the city manager, while we have heard your discussion. Okay, um, let's see, got that.
I didn't hear what Mr....
Mr. Wilkins? We'll make sure I got everybody.
I agree with Mayor Pro Temp. I also don't believe we should micromanage our staff, and like Commissioner Gleason just said, city manager has hurt us. I'll leave it at that.
Oh, I didn't hear what it said.
And I have mentioned to the city manager just to kind of put a bug in my ear before the next year is up, just so we won't have Mr. Frangos on the spot.
And I need to...
All right, has that got you covered? Mr. Gentleman? All right, we move to eleven B. Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Way, SRO discussion manager, GL Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had reached out to, uh, City Manager Turner and requested to know what the cost of this position would be, as we are now absorbed Mount Energy into the city limits. Um, one of the biggest things that I have, I'm, I'm a strong proponent for public safety, and the day and age that we live in, it's just, it's just different, unfortunately. Um, some people say, uh, you really don't need a school resource officer in elementary school, they don't see why. There's several incidents in history, unfortunately, of mine. Um, I would like to see a school resource officer in Mount Energy. Um, I believe it adds another layer of our community to the situation, to have someone to be a liaison and a role model for these kids, not necessarily a, a far-carrying figure, but someone that can look up to and be able to go to if there's an issue, but also add that safety factor to the staff and students there at the school. Um, it's something that I, I should have thought about before when we were at budget session, but there's several factors that factor into it. Um, how much money can we get from the school board that they can get from the, the state to help fund this position? Um, would this position even be something that Chief Willis would be interested in entertaining? Would it be a position that the board would look at entertaining? Um, I know we're also, we're going to have to have officers at the school in the mornings and the afternoons anyway with traffic control. So we're already going to have two officers that have to be tied up there for those time periods. Um, it was just a brief discussion, like I said, I just wanted to put it in everybody's ear. Uh, we're not sure what the, the school system's going to do yet, even because the school hasn't, the year hasn't started. Um, the city manager and our finance director was kind enough to stop what they were doing, to look up the figures for me, and I believe everybody got the figures of what it costs to have an officer in the school system, um, at Mount Energy. And also, there was the discussion with a, a school board member, Ms. Hayes, um, about what they had applied for as far as additional SROs for the school system, but they won't have a decision and know until October, which is well after the school's year starts. So one, do we want to look at figuring out a way to put an officer in the school going forward and hope that we can get funding from the state? Um, two, is it something that we solely want to commit to as a board to fund this extra police officer position for the school system? But one of the other things that was also included in, in the notes that I have, um, I guess there's talk with the school system about consolidating schools once again. I haven't heard anything about it, um, officially. There's always rumors out there, so I don't know how that would work, but we're looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I'm, I'm guessing. So that would be the next school year, wouldn't count this school year. So the question would be, well, how would, what would happen with the SROs that we currently have at one of those schools, how will we absorb it? And Chief Willis said that it would absorb it back into patrol, I'm assuming, or some other function with anticipated growth. He's going to continue to ask for an extra officer or more every year. So with that going forward, I just wanted to put that in your, your minds and open to your thoughts, comments.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Willis? All right, if you did, I was going to let him come forward. If not, I think it's a good idea. Um, I would like to see us be able to do that. I would like to see the county board of education or the county fund this, but I think we could use the officer either way, and maybe we can get them to promise to reimburse us when the other comes through. Uh, Commissioner Kaczynski?
Mayor Pro Temp?
So Chief, since school starts on August twelfth, and we're kind of close, do you have a certified SRO on staff right now that you can use in that school?
Yes, I do. Um, and Jessica's already agreed to kind of take that on right now until we can figure something out.
The board knows she doesn't have enough to do.
She's a natural. Plenty, she's my wild card. Yeah, she's agreed to do that.
But she loves it. And they love her, I'm telling you.
And is the school going to be able to provide her with an office?
To my knowledge, I don't think they have space for an officer right now.
Okay.
It kind of depends on how staff, what staff returns and things like that, but, um, we're already in the preliminary talks about traffic and how to do that stuff, and I know there was a, a light pole that had to be moved in order to help us, uh, create a better traffic flow around the back, so we're having that meeting on Wednesday, so we're already in the process of trying to get things going, but I do not think they currently have a place for her, or that's...
Okay. So in the interest of time, and because I absolutely love budget amendments, thank you, Robert. Way? Lee? Here we go. I would like to make a motion that we agree to put an SRO at Mount Energy Elementary School for this school year.
Do we need...
Who'd I scare over there?
Do we need to, uh, is, are the details already worked out if, I mean, you've talked to Jessica, but as far as, um, paycheck goes and time goes and, in other words, this is a discussion item, when do you need somebody in place?
Jessica's...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Jessica's trained, she's ready to go, so it's not like a push on that.
Right.
City manager?
Just for the board's information, the, as current SOR agreement, SRO agreement we have with Granville County expired on June thirty. I mentioned it to Drew Cummings, uh, once or twice, I've mentioned it to Stan, it's, it's in Drew's court, he said he'd address it with Jim Renn, who hadn't given us a revised agreement, which this one might be included in, but right now we're, we do not have a contract for the SRO agreement between cities and county.
For any of them?
None of them. Agreement expired June thirty.
Wow.
And, uh, that was brought up to them back in March and April, but they just hadn't gotten around to it.
Mr. Mayor? Is there a clarification on that, Mr. Card?
Sure, what would you like to know?
So you've requested a modification to the SRO, kind of like... So you've requested a modification to the SRO contract.
We requested a, an extension or an amendment to it to carry it on, an additional year. It went to Stan, I was thinking that's where it would initiate, but it, he said it's in Drew's lap and it's in Jim Ren's lap, and they've known about it for several months. Now, why Jim hadn't gotten to it, I don't know, but we do not have an SRO agreement right now to continue this, you know, arrangement.
I'll be happy to pass on the long break to the general manager.
Thank you, sir. So if we have no contract with any of the SROs, and we don't have any by the time say school starts, we going to provide them anyway?
Well, we're on the hook for the cost, because the grant's tied to that agreement.
So what I was wondering about is, should we tag this one in to that contract?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not included, and we would like it included, but if it's not, we can always add it, but I hate to add one to one that we don't even know what.
Right.
Yeah. So would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I absolutely will withdraw my motion.
Okay, and that way we hopefully, for us, Commissioner Way?
I will.
Commissioner Maywood?
As appropriate course, we move forward.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
That's in the back of your mind.
I'll feel better since that was a discussion item.
Chief, go ahead, just move normal like normally.
All right, we go to twelve, which the city managers report.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, as twenty twenty-four wraps up, the city received our first invoice from the Granville County for shared grant writer services for the fourth quarter totaling ten thousand three hundred eighteen dollars. The city-county agreement requires a detailed listing of Jamie Oxendine's efforts. A copy of this three and a half page of accomplishments are in your agenda package, and due to the delayed selection and hiring and starting process, twenty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars of the forty thousand budgeted last year will roll back into fund balance. Forty-three thousand was approved by the board for FY twenty twenty-five. We'll have a discussion with Kerry Hobgood, that's a pretty intent, detailed report. I'm sure that you may have questions about some of the items on there, and I thought it would be a good idea to get Kerry to talk to Jamie about coming down here quarterly, maybe to answer questions or talk to you guys about what he's doing, and he'll be here to answer questions. On Saturday, July the sixth, the city community farmers market opened with four vendors present. Traffic was light due to, due to the July fourth holiday weekend. The Creedmore Community Farmers Market will be open the first and third Saturday of each month from eight AM until one o'clock PM through November the sixth, except for the September twenty-first Creedmore Music Festival. All right, the veterans memorial picture, I'm going to ask the clerk if she'll put that up. A big shout out to Steve Edwards and the Public Works team for the outstanding job they did in foundation preparation, pouring of concrete, the side work, after-hours support of the dedication ceremony, which was all planning and after-hours for his crew, so I can't thank Steve enough. And on Monday, July the eighth, I expressed the city's appreciation and took the Public Works team out for all-you-can-eat pizza for their tireless efforts in searing heat, when you all know we've had some very excessive heat over the past eight weeks with the veterans monument and new epoxy service and on the sports plaza, and they thoroughly enjoyed that time. Hero banners. To date, nine veterans hero banners have been sold, they've, they've had mockups, which you see here on the screen, the proofs have been checked, and the order was placed today, the PO was already issued. To date, we have raised four hundred and fifty dollars, that's two hundred dollars for the banner, and fifty dollars goes to the veterans plaza. So we've raised two, four hundred and fifty dollars in banner sales, four thousand three hundred sixty-four in brick sales, and donations of three thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars for a total of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars total towards the veterans plaza. Also, on July the eighth, at a regular meeting of the Granville County Board of Commissioners, the board approved a Parkson Greenway Recreation Advisory Committee mini-grant that Dennis submitted for the city in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents for the installation of a two-person swing and eleven picnic table, replacement picnic tables at Lake Rogers. VC three's executive summary for the month ended on June thirty reflected forty-three work orders were open, thirty-eight were closed. Monthly managed services contract totaled eleven thousand one hundred and six dollars. It typically runs average thirteen, but it varies a little from eleven, twelve, thirteen, so I told you I'd keep you up to date on those monthly expenditures, and subject to your question, that concludes my comments.
Any questions from city manager?
Yes, sir.
Not seeing any. We'll move on to Mayor Pro Temp's Segwasa report.
The monthly Segwasa meeting was very colorful, and we talked about our strategic planning session, which is, which is coming up. We appointed a new finance committee group, and Vicki Daniels will be the new chair, and the strategic planning session will be in October. Commissioner Gleason came to the meeting and spoke in public comment and did a wonderful job, as he always does, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Way, anything to add to that?
Yes, sir, I forwarded the last Segwasa director's report.
All right, let's go to commissioners' reports. We're going to start with Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you, sir. Since our last meeting, I attended the veterans memorial dedication at the community center on Friday evening, June twenty-first. When I read about the new Christmas tree, I noticed that it comes with garland and lights, and I believe the city manager told me that Public Works will buy some ornaments for the tree. And I was thinking, maybe as that's done, we can include all the students from all of our schools to help decorate and work that tree during the holidays, I think that's something they would appreciate, and give them some input into the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gleason.
I attended the Carter Todd meeting, went to the veterans memorial dedication, and Segwasa meeting.
Mr. Way.
You guys have awesome, I mean, picture, all have, a wonderful summertime activity.
Mr. Albright.
Let's see, I also attended the veterans memorial dedication, and it was hot. And I was the speaker for the fireworks this year, and I'm going to pass the torch, y'all are coming with me next year, you're coming with me, or y'all canceling your, your, your vacation, because I got stuck doing it last year, too. I haven't been able to go on vacation during the holiday for two years now, so I'm going to pass the torch to one of you. But I want to thank Chief Willis, he was my, my golf cart and my chauffeur that day, it was super hot, so I just wanted to have a shout out to him, and thank you for doing that, it was very, very nice, it was very fun, we had a good time, so, that was it.
All right, Mayor Pro Temp.
So I attended the Segwasa meeting and the Campo meeting last month. I see that Creedmore had its first community farmers market, and I've been told by those who were there that it was a great success, and wanted to remind everybody that it is again this Saturday at City Hall parking lot, and the, there will be a tent set up by the Capitol.
Okay.
Anything to say?
All right, I thought it was this one. I had a combat veteran who travels around the country, attending, visiting all the veterans memorial sites throughout the country, and he came by hours in Creedmore and put a post on Facebook stating that he was going to ask the state captain of the Combat Veterans Association, which is a group of combat veterans from the Vietnam War, if they would add this monument to the honor tour. And a post went up again yesterday saying it absolutely has been added to the honor tour, and I'm really excited that our monument has gotten that kind of designation. Jason Michael Carroll did a great job at our event, and it was extremely hot, but the mayor showed up in a suit and tie as we were all melting, God bless him, and he was late, and even though the crowd was begging me.
Some of us have to work for rental jobs.
They begged me to please start without you, I waited for you out of respect for you.
I got there about two minutes after three or whatever.
I'm looking for, I hope everybody comes out to the farmers market on Saturday, I hope that our commissioners can stop by and see how good it is, and thank you to Jessica Laws for standing out in the heat on a Saturday with us for that, the poor girl never takes the day off.
All right, moving down to Mayor's report, I was on vacation, and I did get my little grassy areas mowed and trash picked up, so I got that taken care of. Veterans Memorial was hot, and I just felt like because of the solemn occasion, I needed to wear a coat and tie. I don't know if I will ever go to a solemn occasion again with it being that hot, because it was hot. We'll thank Commissioner Albright for taking care of the fireworks for us, that's just the one week I always go out of town.
Me, too.
I also want to revert back to one thing with Mr. Frango's. We have put issues and directions in our ordinances for our CDO to follow, he followed those, and I think it's important that we let him make the judgment and calls on that, and not try to second guess anything you're doing, and I agree that what you did, because I'd rather give him an extension than have him close down and move back, so I want to tell you, I appreciate it, and I think you made the right move on that.
I agree.
All right, anything else needs to come before the board?
I think the chief wants to.
Chief, you want to say something?
I think after the meeting.
All right, you want to do that during the meeting?
After the meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Albright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, we are adjourned.